I'd like to call this meeting or this budget hearing to order at 6:13. Do we need a motion for this? All right. There's a report by Ms. Linda Quinley. While she's coming up, I guess I should call attendance.
Mr. Barca.
Present.
Ms. Buckner. Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Ms. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Hogan. Dr. Jones.
Present.
Ms. Wolfsee.
For the presentation of the 2022-2023 KCPS budget, the Chair calls on the Superintendent, Dr. Bedell, to lead this report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're excited today to have an opportunity to present the presentation of the 2022-2023 KCPS budget. This is our opportunity to allow for the community to engage with us here and accept any questions as we move closer to the final approval of a budget for the upcoming school year, which will take place during the month of June at our business meeting, I believe. So for this presentation, I present to you all our Chief Financial Operating Officer, Linda Quinley.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, Mr. Barca, board, and public. We are here for the excitement of the budget hearing for the 2223 budget season. And I realize we're a little behind, so... Brian said I was all set and ready to go, but maybe I'm not. There we go. Okay. Am I driving? Okay, thank you. So we wanted to start with a review of the superintendent's goals. He brought these to you in January and reviewed what the priorities would be in the 2223 budget. So I'm going to take just a minute and walk through these first two slides to talk about how those goals were established and what you will find in this year's budget that supports those. So number one, assure long-term fiscal sustainability and/or sound use of one-time use of reserve funds. This budget does not ask for use of reserve funds. It is basically a balanced budget. Number two, talks about sustainable reductions. This, we've talked about for a couple of years, based on enrollment trends and the way the foundation formula works in the state of Missouri and local share of revenues with charter schools, we expected a $16 million decrease in our operating revenues next year as we started this budget season. But as you know, as we've kept you current with legislative changes and some decisions made by DCE, that has been pushed down the road one year. And so it is not a factor in this year's budget. We'll talk a little more later, however, about the fact that we have implemented about $1.9 million in reductions related to this effort. The third item is about compensation, particularly teachers' compensation. And we are really happy to have worked with our labor union and brought to the board and approved by the board a collective bargaining agreement that increases starting pay for teachers by $2,600 and adds about $5 million to the operating budget just for teachers for next year. Beginning the implementation of Blueprint 2030 Educational or Academic Vision, you'll find $3 million specifically for this, plus almost $2 million in capital projects, so nearly $5 million in this budget to begin that academic vision expansion. Career and Technical Education, there's $2.5 million in this budget specifically for that program. And our special education students, there's over $12 million of resources in this budget for special education. Expansion of supports for social-emotional needs, there's a variety of things that have been established during this year that we're putting through into next year's budget, including the opportunity for our schools to, if they choose with resources given to them, employ deans of culture and climate. $2.7 million of continuing to support services and staffs currently provided under the VOCA grant. A clinician in the admissions department to work with our incoming students and assess them early on. Four trauma-sensitive clinicians that were added for Tier One and Tier Three schools. And an increase in the Niles budget to support high-need children who are not special education but need to be with specialized staff. An expansion of pre-K, we have, we are adding three classrooms in the Citywide Cooperative with partners, and a classroom at Garcia as well as Hartman. So five additional pre-K classrooms in this coming budget. Resources for marketing and enrollment, $3.1 million of this budget goes toward those efforts. And supporting virtual and other flexible learning options, virtual school, night school, early college academy, and those kinds of programs, middle college are included in this budget. And number 11, additional supports through ESAR. And number 12 is facility. Between those two, we have $17 million of supports for ESAR that are instructional, mentoring, and student support for next year. Twenty-eight percent of next year's ESAR allocation specifically in those areas. And $21 million related to facility enhancements, which ones yet to be determined, but all around indoor air quality and improving the working and learning environment for our teachers and students. We'll make those final recommendations to you in June, July, and August of this coming year. As we get into this budget, it's probably important to remember, it's been a challenging time to start working in a budget, not knowing for sure what was going to happen with state budget, legislation still pending that could significantly impact us next year. Legislative session ends on Friday, so we're still waiting. But we did see an increase in transportation funding of $3.9 million that will be incorporated in this budget because, for the first time in 21 years, the state of Missouri is meeting the statutory requirement of funding 75% of transportation. We have increase in Prop C revenue, which, as you know, is a statewide sales tax. And we did, as I mentioned earlier, see the delay in what we expected to be the decrease in state funding that is tied to enrollment and attendance in our charters. I mentioned pending legislation, so we're waiting to see what happens there. And then beginning our efforts in Blueprint 2030, trying to fold those in, and then overlaying the ESAR funds following the rules, what's allowable, what's been allocated to us. Currently, we're planning to use these funds through the '23-'24 school year. So specifically, if you go to the bottom corner here, we have a net increase in operating revenues, the incidental and teachers fund, of $3.2 million. That's only one and a half percent. These are some of the items we've talked about a little earlier under the goals of where you will see changes in our expenditures. I want to highlight a couple that we didn't mention as a part of the goals. Language services, there's $812,000 added for transportation and additional staff to our newcomer or our welcome center for our language-learning children. Montessori training compliance, in order to get our teachers fully Montessori-trained at both of our schools, there's $1.3 million of resources in this budget, which is 18 new FTE. And musical instruments, science equipment, classroom furniture, and world language, the ESAR dollars are providing some resources to kick off that academic vision again. This is the staffing tier. This is year five, that we've used this tier to focus our resources based on the needs of our schools. This is funded largely, partially through the operating budget, but also through our Title One resources and our ESAR dollars. And you can see by tier, the resources that an individual school is given in this budget that will be presented to you. I wanted to note, in Tier Three, you'll see the last two lines are the same in all of them. Every building will have a family support professional to engage their local community, as well as two building substitutes that are specifically assigned. Operational spending, this gives you a quick peek by type of service as to where the changes are happening in our budget and what the total budget will be. You can see in that middle section, the fiscal year '23 request, at the very bottom, this is a $213 million operating budget, with a net increase of that same $3.2 million that we saw in revenue change. Probably important to note that as we look at the additional resources, that equity funding line, it looks like we're not doing that because you see those zeros in the middle two columns there for this year and a decrease. And that is because we've moved those resources to ESAR and Title One to really make sure we maximize and use those dollars that are available to us. It's not that we've taken those programs out of the system. This is a peak based on projections. And again, projections are as good as the information you have the day you make them, of what this budget will mean to fund balance. And as you know, the fund balance at the beginning of the year is what this district lives on until the primary line of revenue comes in the next January. We have an appropriate fund balance. We're projecting it at about 28%, just under $60 million. Really important to remember that we carry, we need to carry a higher fund balance than most districts in the state of Missouri because of the fact that we do not receive a payment every month from the state of Missouri for state aid, like every school with the exception of us and St. Louis. This is a little summary of the COVID spending. As a board, you've looked at this and seen this several times, but just kind of summarizes and highlights where we're spending those COVID dollars next year of $43 million. And this is our timeline. What happens from here to the end of the goal, we have the statutory obligation to implement the budget by June 30th of each year. So today, we stand here before you with this hearing, two days left until final legislative session. We will bring you the best portion of a draft document that we can at May 25th, and then get a final budget to you in time that at that June 22nd meeting, we hope that we're ready to present it and have it adopted in final form.
Thank you, Ms. Quinley. It would be in order to receive a motion to open the floor to public comments. Is there a motion?
Tell them.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner. Ms. Cortez. Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones. Ms. Wolfsee.
Yes.
I guess the eyes have it, technically. We have two speakers who have signed up to make a statement regarding the 2022-2023 budget. In addition, we welcome any additional comments. If you are available to comment in person on the budget, please sign this, the sign-in sheet on the back table. If you are online and want to submit a comment via text, you may do so by texting 816-325-9977. And if appropriate, we will read the comment. Speakers for today are Mr. John Fierro from Matty Rhodes. Mr. Fierro, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Barca. And if possible, I think Angela's the second person. Can we just let her go first and I go second? Can we still stay within our three minutes each?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to just express my sincere appreciation for allowing Matty Rhodes Center to be a part of KCPS through various, variety of different schools, elementary to middle to high school over the past 10 years. I foremost have been heels on the ground, working directly from what was Northeast High School, James Elementary, to East High School, and rotation throughout each week. And gratefully, we were able to expand our services, providing service coordination, case management, therapy, and psychoeducational groups to more schools over the past 10 years. So now we are collectively serving eight schools within KCPS, and we really like to continue to grow with these services and its additional support with the trauma-sensitive clinicians under Dr. Woodley's leadership. A lot of our resources and a lot of our service coordinators and clinicians are onsite full-time or throughout rotation in the week to work with these staff members, to work with students, and to work with families. A lot of our resources provided are from case management, such as ERAP, emergency, I'm sorry, utility assistance, to providing food insecurities, clothes, uniforms, and such. We'd like to continue to move forward with this and expanding these services for our clinicians and for Matty Rhodes Center in KCPS because, starting at an elementary level, we see our kids go from the sixth grade over to a middle school. We'd like to have and provide those services in continuation for additional support and onto high school. I believe that Matty Rhodes Center is able to provide that safe haven, that ecosystem of support, that resiliency lens to really build with our children, to build with the communities, to build with the parents in providing these resources, and to keep all of our risks and all of the environmental factors that are out there at a minimum. So I do appreciate all of the opportunities that we've had, and we look forward to growing with our services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. And you had a minute thirty left.
So I'll take that. So good evening. My name is John Fierro. I'm the president and CEO of Matty Rhodes Center and former school board member. So thank you all for all that you do for our families. Matty Rhodes Center was established in 1894. We are in our second century of community service. We are nationally accredited by the Council on Accreditation. We've enjoyed a long-term partnership with the Kansas City Public Schools, one that is very mutual. So the district has been very supportive in contracting us for services. And at the same time, we have leveraged those resources and brought in additional items such as additional social workers. As Angela spoke, we are in eight schools. Two of those schools, we bring funding from the Jackson County Children's Services Fund of about $175,000 that we place, social workers at Premativo Garcia and James. At Garcia, in particular, we have invested more than $10,000 in providing food assistance, clothing, bedding, you name it, all of the social needs that kids need. We've been able to leverage funds to be able to help those families. And in particular, last year, as an agency, we provided over a half million dollars in rent and utility assistance to Kansas City, Missouri residents. A good portion of those attend KCPS. So we are leveraging dollars, and a lot of our work really fits into the strategic plan, the current strategic plan of goal number two, which is whole child, safe, challenged, and supported. So certainly, what we're trying to do is to create and add to that safety, as well as provide that social-emotional support. As Angela said, we want to expand. Right now, we're in six elementary schools, plus the two elementary schools that are paid for by Jackson County Children's Services Fund. We want to grow into Northeast Middle and Northeast High. We believe what is needed at each of those schools is a partnership of a full-time therapist and a full-time case manager. And then, if we were able to do that, those are four new staff. The two current service coordinators would continue. We would assign them two elementary schools each versus three. That's just a lot to take on any one person for three. And then we would add a third service coordinator. The other part of the expansion, and it was interesting, there was one particular position you had in there called a family support coordinator, and maybe it's very similar, but we like to believe there are more resources in the community to be leveraged. And so with this new expansion, we would have a project director that these eight folks would report to, and their job would be to go out and engage the private sector, the public sector, to bring in money, volunteerism, and other in-kind resources. So I would just conclude by saying, you know, last year, our attempt was to have a therapist in one of the our attempt was to have a therapist in one of the schools, and we had to remove that from our budget. We just had the same challenges that you all had last year in hiring teachers with COVID. We just had fewer applicants that were applying for therapist jobs. But I would just tell you, things have turned around at Matty Rhodes. Just in the last four months, we have hired four new therapists. So we hope that we're kind of out of that COVID, you know, tunnel there that we're starting to get more individuals. And finally, we're providing a lot more training to our bachelor-level social workers to be able to provide a lot of behavioral health intervention.
Thank you, Mr. Fiero and Ms. Flores. Are there additional, oh, perfect. Are there additional questions? Or I'm sorry, are there additional speakers in the audience who have not signed up or would like to testify during the public comment section? If not, we've got some letters that were sent to us that I'll jump through real quick. So from the Center for Conflict Resolution. The Center for Conflict Resolution has been working with the district since 2009. We look forward to continuing our partnership to assist KCPS in becoming a model district for restorative practices that upholds the dignity of every person. CCR staff members are skilled and experienced at helping youth and adults in education implementation, restorative justice practices to create a just and equitable learning environment, nurture healthy relationships with in-between administrators, staff, and students, support students and staff to repair harm and transform conflict when it occurs. Estimated cost to CCR restorative justice specialists in each school one day a week. CCR's best practice is to co-facilitate each process and training. Includes mediation for conflict situations before it escalates to violence. RJ specialists are available on other days during the week for heightened situations. Conflict resolution workshops for all students. Other staff members are available to assist RJSs when needed. School staff coaching for restorative practices implementation. $800 per day for 36 schools for 36 weeks totaling $1,036,800. Glad I can read numbers still. Adult discipline that restores two-day training includes restorative justice theory and practice, conflict resolution skills, trauma awareness and healing circle processes facilitation. 30 trainings for up to 25 people each at $300 per person, $225,000. Up to 50 hours of planning and collaboration with district and school personnel included in above cost. Thank you for consideration. Annette Lance, Executive Director. Tyrone Anderson, Education Program Manager. And Gregory Winship, Justice Program and Adult Training Manager. And that was from the Center for Conflict Resolution. From Mr. Mike Macias, the Executive Director of the LNESC KC or LULAC, has been a partner with KCPS, providing K through 12 programming since 1976. All of our programs have been funded through foundations and the federal government. Earlier this year, you and I spoke about the leadership opportunities. We had specifically discussed the possibility of KCPS contracting LNESC KC to implement the program at a couple of high schools. It is a reasonable cost of $10,000 per school year. The results are outstanding and undeniably beneficial to all students who participate in the program. I would like to take this opportunity to be introduced to the KCPS leadership team for consideration in the KCPS budgetary plans. We've got Ms. Kelly, I believe it's Yokum. I was at the DAC meeting on May 5th and spoke to my principal about it. We really need a playground at King Elementary and would greatly appreciate the consideration of the board because our students deserve it. If there is anything I can do or if you have additional questions, please feel free to contact me or Ms. Danae Mae Abram. I believe there's another one with a playground. And I might have lost that one. There's another playground request for, my apologies, let me look here. At Borderstar, and I'll have to send that back out. I'm sorry, I don't have the email in front of me. In regards to the same thing, they would like a new playground. There was an email from the Paseo Band Program in regards to a 2023 Chicago band trip relating to students experiencing a Chicago band trip totaling... It says, let me read it to you. "There isn't a total cost. They make you figure that out for some reason. So I use the price under double-room nights for a total of $17,000 for hotels, $8,560 for activities, $25,680 with transportation, charter bus companies quotes, for a total of $30,000 to $35,000, depending upon charter bus costs that we'd like to be considered for the budget hearing." With that, are there any other additions from my colleagues? Are there any additions for folks who have shown up within our allotted time to present during the public hearing? No comments online, June, you said? With that, we will conclude our budget hearing, and we will adjourn to the general session. Oh, I guess we're moving right into the general session. Guess I have to do this by procedure. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors. You can see I'm reading a script here. Oh, I'm scaring you. Take that. Kansas City Public School Board of Directors of May 1st, 2020 is called to order. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford?
Present.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones? Ms. Wolf C.
At the pleasure of the board, we're seeking an excused absence for our Board Chair, Nate Hogan. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll accept his excused absence. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda? At this time, sorry. Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Tell them.
Thank you. The agenda, oops. June, please call the roll. This is a process. Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolf C.
Yes.
The agenda is approved. June, what are the outstanding action items?
Currently, there are no outstanding action items. They've all been resolved.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell, who will introduce the report, or his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we are excited to present to the board our equity update as it pertains to Equity Policy 0.0. And as you all know, this is an area that Darryl Davis and his team that he has assembled is over. And so at this time, I'll bring Darryl Davis up for the presentation, and I'm really excited about what you have to share with us tonight.
Thank you and good evening, Superintendent Bedell, Board Treasurer for Barca, members of the board and audience. I am joined this evening by members of the equity team. We have Mr. Marquise Hall, Manager of Student Diversity and Inclusion Programs, Joyce Nguyen Hernandez, College Access Coordinator. And I believe we have Ms. Michaela Dugan, Equity Data Analyst with us here this evening. So we're here to provide an update on Board Policy 0.0, which the board passed in 2018. This policy is an overarching policy that guides all of the work that we're doing within Kansas City Public Schools and should be a thread across all policies. In the highlights, there is a sentence that says, "It is critical and necessary that we understand and work to eliminate discriminatory practices." Key word in there is to understand. And so through this presentation, we want to highlight many of the trainings that we are offering to our leadership, executive leaders, principals, et cetera, so that we first can understand the history of inequity so that we can begin to build new practices to dismantle those legacies. And then also, in that bottom paragraph that the board prepared, that the board will hold all KCPS staff accountable for delivering their work through an equity lens. And so no single person can live up to the lofty goals that we see within the equity policy. It must take all of our KCPS employees. And so we hope to show you through this presentation how we're living out that charge. These are our key performance indicators that we're measuring. We're looking at the demographic ratio of staff to students in our schools. We're looking at disparities in discipline data across feeder zones and respectively in those individual schools at all levels. And then we're also following up on our DE&amp;I Diversity Equity and Inclusion Stakeholder Survey. Last year, we surveyed our teaching staff, and we received a lot of feedback, which actually went into our academic vision to unveil going into next year, many supports around culture-responsive teaching. This year, we surveyed our students. And so we're monitoring that feedback, and you'll see a little bit of that in our KPI monitoring. So again, we're monitoring a lot of data through the Equity Office. This is just a sample of the KPIs. So this school, this is one of our actual elementary schools. We took the name of the school off. But as you look at the data, you will see that in this particular elementary school, that 72% of the students in this school are Black. Of the 72% of students, 50% of those students are male. But when we look at the staff representation, there's not a single black male staff member. And so we're looking at that school by school. Also, on this chart, you can see that within the same elementary school, 17% of the students in this school are Hispanic. But when we look at the staff, zero teachers are Hispanic, male or female. And so representation matters. We're looking, this is again, just one sample, but we're looking at this school by school. And the reason it's important to do so is when we look at the district-wide data and the percent of teachers of color, as we focus on this recruitment and retention of teachers of color, if we only look at it system-wide, then many of the disparities that may exist in individual schools could be masked by the overall data. Also, we continue to dig into discipline disparities. Any disparities that we uncover or share with principals through their equity audits that we've unveiled over the last couple of years. As you realize, tackling inequities, disparities is fairly complex. And so we have to have complex ways of measuring progress and identifying any of these disparities so that we can be innovative in our solutions and our approach. But on this particular slide, you will see this reflects all of these schools in the Northeast feeder zone. So all of the elementary schools, the middle school that feeds, and including Northeast High School. As we look at the data in the zone, the enrollment for Black students and Hispanic students is about the same, 40% and 36% respectively. But when we look at the OSS days, the 40% of Black students that make up the zone account for 71% of the suspension days. So this means that Black students in the Northeast feeder zone are three and a half times as likely to receive a suspension as Hispanic students and others in the zone. So this disparity, again, we can look at it school by school and share that with those individual principals to see how they may be contributing, or not say they as individuals, but which schools may have deeper disparities so that we can then begin to identify solutions and to be able to close these gaps. And unfortunately, this particular disparity has widened or increased since SY20. But again, we have the data for each zone, and we have the data for each school. So earlier, it was mentioned that we're also conducting surveys to stakeholders. Last year, staff, this year, high school students. And the students provided us with a lot of actionable feedback, and we're using this to plan our response as we go into next school year. So in the upper right-hand corner, one of the questions that students were asked, "Do you feel unsafe at your school because of your gender?" And you can see that the highest percent of students who felt unsafe because of their gender are those who identify as non-binary or other. And so this gives us a lot of insight as to what additional trainings or structures we need to put in place to make sure that all students feel safe and that they belong in school. Also, you can see that we also asked around harassment and how effective staff members are in addressing any harassment that's reported. And the options were, they're listed at the bottom. Not at all effective, somewhat ineffective, somewhat effective, and very effective. So if you look at the bottom right corner, and it asks, "Overall, how effective was the staff's response in addressing harassment or solved the last time you reported it?" The percent that responded with not at all effective or somewhat ineffective, those are the percentages that you see represented there on the slide. And so what that tells us is, is that staff members may be ill-prepared or unequipped to respond when issues such as this come to their attention. So we want to make sure that we use this data to provide appropriate training and support so that anyone who's on the receiving end of any sort of complaint, whether it's dealing with ethnicity or a gender, that there's a process in place as to where to go, how we will resolve it. And then, and we want to see this number come down in years to come. So as we look at our previous context, and these are some of the items that we've unveiled in previous updates. But just as a reminder, here's some. So we did create an Equity Steering Committee. It's made up of diverse stakeholders, not only staff members from various departments. The staff who sit on that committee are very diverse, gender-wise, ability status, LGBTQ status, ethnicity, age, et cetera. But we also have community partners that serve on that committee. We have members of the NAACP on the committee. We have parents, DAC members on the committee. And so this committee works together to monitor equity initiatives across the district. We also, a couple of years, maybe three years ago, instituted implicit bias training for all new employees. So every employee over the last three years that's coming to our organization, this is a part of their onboarding. Also, we've facilitated numerous trainings for principals, directors, executive staff on a number of equity-focused topics. And if you're wondering, well, how are these topics being utilized by our leaders? Just to give an example, this year, we participated or led a training around creating inclusive spaces for LGBTQ youth. And so in response, and this is just one example. At Southeast High School, instead of the traditional prom king and queen roles and titles that kids typically vote to get their top male vote-getters the prom king, the top female vote-getters the prom queen, we had non-binary students who inquired, you know, "Are we able to run for either one of these roles?" And so when the administration reached out to me and asked, "Is it okay for someone of one gender to, if they identify with a different gender, to select which one?", I said, "Absolutely." And I said, "In fact, I would suggest you get rid of that altogether and just go non-gender titles." And what the school came back with after they debriefed with their leadership team, they have decided, and they did this for this year, they eliminated prom king and queen and went to prom royalty. So the top two vote-getters, no matter what the gender, they are named the prom royalty for Southeast. High School and I anticipate that other schools will follow suit. This eliminates gender being even a consideration as we move forward. Ultimately, what we're doing through all these trainings is we're expanding the number of people who are responsible for the implementation of equity initiatives as is spelled out by Board Policy 0.0, which says that it is the responsibility of all employees to conduct their work through an equity lens. And so we're empowering all staff to be able to do this. Our current status, these are all new items that were launched just this year. We launched a Student Equity Action Committee to serve as a counterpart to the staff's... We launched a student equity action committee to serve as a counterpart to the uh, the staff's equity steering committee. The board adopted our formal K C P S land acknowledgement statement. And the feedback thus far is that this statement has gone to, as, as a first step to really restore the, the, the relationship uh, that, that indigenous Kansas Cityans have felt, that we're acknowledging that our students are sitting in classrooms that, I, I hate to call it stolen land, but they're sitting in classrooms that uh, once upon a time um, belonged to indigenous people that they never hear about or learn about in their uh, classroom teaching. And so uh, we've, we've received some kudos. The board has received kudos for uh, adopting that statement. Again, we've mentioned that uh, P D on inclusive spaces for L G B T Q students. We also did one on supporting Muslim and Jewish students. And we've been intentional about our efforts to increase students' voice and sense of belonging. And you'll hear more about that from uh, my other two staff members, who I call the student success team. You'll hear from them in just a bit. But in addition to increasing a sense of belonging for students, we have to do more than simply uh, focus on recruitment and retention of teachers of color. Someone could stay for five years, maybe because they need employment. So retention is one thing, but how are we sustaining all of our staff? And so when we talk about sustaining, to nurture, to feed, to make sure that that staffer, person's not just surviving, but thriving, we have been intentional about doing that as well. Uh, this school year, we had our first ever Divine Nine celebration. And I don't know if you had a chance to monitor the social media posts, but from what I could tell, nearly every school uh, got involved in that. And it's, it's embracing the culture that we bring with us into the school district. Again, this is a, a, uh, an initial step, but we realize there's a lot more that we must do to make sure that all of our staff are thriving, black staff, uh, Hispanic staff, indigenous, L G B T Q, those who uh, may not be able-bodied. In what ways are we nurturing all staff to uh, uh, ensure their sense of belonging? As we then ask them to do the same for our students. In many ways, we're asking teachers to be the teachers that we never had, to make sure that we uh, embrace and acknowledge the culture of our students and embed that into the classroom. We as a district office uh, must be intentional about doing that as well. And again, those are just some of the uh, events. If I could share this one, in the lower right-hand corner, um, that's when we had our uh, Mr. Bob Kendrick served as our keynote speaker for our Black History Month Luncheon Learn. And afterward, there was a first-year staff member that came up to me in tears, in tears, saying that this is so impactful and this is the type of organization I always wanted to work for. She cited uh, having gone through implicit bias training uh, in August and then come February to witness this. She said, this is the type of culture I was hoping for. And again, the tears were coming down her cheeks and so just wanted to share that uh, piece there. All right. And so next up, I will turn it over to Marquise Hall, who will talk about student diversity and inclusion efforts.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, uh, Board Treasurer Barca and members of the board. Today I'm going to highlight um, a few of the successes that we've had as far as student diversity and inclusion are concerned. So this year, we launched our first ever envelope decorating contest for, to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And what we did was we held a focus group and we really wanted to understand what were the lived experiences of our Asian students across K C P S. And what we did was we asked them, what have we done so far to celebrate you? And how can we continue to celebrate your culture throughout the district? Um, this was a really great experience because it gave students an opportunity to really speak up and be heard about what we can do. And um, it was their input that guided the um, the competition. And you can see that flyer in the, in the corner. Um, this competition is still going on and it will end on five thirteen. The next thing that I would like to highlight is our RISE program. So this year, um, we served sixty-three students in the RISE program. Um, forty-seven percent of those students were freshmen and sophomores. And there was diversity across all grades, genders and even races. Um, we helped monthly workshops that focused on social and emotional health, college admissions requirements. We practiced interviewing and even how to write a resume. And in fact, um, at the end of this school year, we uh, surveyed the students. And of the students who were surveyed, sixty-three percent indicated that they learned how to write a resume. So that was really fantastic. And we were supported by many groups, um, like university health and even K C P S staff who volunteered to lead sessions. In addition to that, all of the students were given mentorship by an adult in their building to make sure that they checked, that we checked on their academics, their behaviors and any social and emotional concerns that they may have had. The next point that I would like to talk about is that our ninth graders who were part of RISE um, had a point four seven higher GPA on average as compared to their peers. In fact, the RISE students had, on average, the ninth graders that is, had a two-point-eight GPA versus their peers who had a two-point-three-three GPA. And we were um, very intentional on focusing on the ninth graders because we know that ninth graders need a lot of support and we want to make sure that they have a smooth and successful start to their high school career. Um, and so uh, we made sure that this was open to any child who wanted to participate. As I continue with the successes that we've had in our program, um, I would like to highlight the student equity action committee. We had thirty students from diverse backgrounds participate in this and we had representation from all of the high schools. Um, administrators were asked, or the, I'm sorry, the administrators were tasked to uh, find ninth through eleventh grade students that reflected the racial um, and cultural diversity of their school. And we were really looking for students who would speak to their lived experiences, which you can see in that picture at the very bottom. Um, and so what we did was we spent the year focusing on building background and getting common definitions of diversity, equity and inclusion. And how do we actually and authentically celebrate each other's culture? Our ultimate goal is to create, suggest and evaluate the four strategic plans that are outlined by the Equity Steering Committee. Also, we increased the number of internal mentors from seventy-one to one hundred thirty-eight. That was a ninety-four percent increase this year. And what we did was we worked with our site coordinators at each school and our building leaders to do that. In fact, many building leaders gave up their professional development time or they devoted some other time to support this initiative. Um, and there was simply one ask by the principals. Um, in many cases, the principal would say, I don't need you to take four kids or five students. Why don't you just take one, making one, taking one student will make a huge difference in their life and provide them with constant mentorship will get them to where we want, to where we want. Um, and we also highlighted our mentors during National Mentorship Month, which was in January. As we look ahead to our timeline, as you can see in September, we would like to pilot affinity groups in one to two schools. We know that affinity groups are voluntary and they're student-led and they bring people together who have a common identifier. The whole goal of the affinity groups is to make sure that cert, that students are supported, understood and that they're able to share resources with one another. And they can be based on a, a lot of things. It can be based on race, it can be based on age, religion, so we, or L G, L G B T plus status and things like that. Um, as we think about women's history, which occurs in March, we know that women have made significant contributions to our world. And so what we need to do is we need to have focus groups and also bring this in front of the student equity action committee to figure out, how do we want to celebrate it? This year, we kind of touched on it a little bit in one of our meetings and some of the students suggested things like, we should do film studies or we should look at women and entrepreneurship, or we could do a spoken word contest. So we're still trying to figure out what it is that we're going to do to celebrate that. And then last but not least, um, I'm really excited about this. This um, we're, we're going to talk about Autism Acceptance Month, which will be in April. That idea was brought up by the students in the Student Equity Action Committee. Um, in fact, they said, those are the students that we oftentimes forget about. We talk about race, we talk about gender, but we never really talk about the students with disabilities. Um, so the whole goal of, of, of Autism Acceptance Month, in my mind, is to make sure that we spread awareness and promote acceptance and ignite change. Um, we want to make sure that we work to be more inclusive of individuals with autism and even on the broader schedule, individuals with disabilities. With that, I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Joyce Nguyen Hernandez. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and board members. I'd like to report my successes in my second year as the College Access Coordinator for the district. For these past two years, I've looked at a lot of numbers and that was unexpected for me because I'm trained up to be a high school English teacher. So, but uh, in my first year, everything that I hosted was virtual and students didn't get a chance to step on um, a college campus. However, this school year, with the pandemic slowing down and COVID cases decreasing, we were permitted to safely sponsor multiple college visits and we went to U M K C, Lincoln University and K U. Uh, we were able to connect students to academic programs and to C T E higher ed options with over four hundred students. For our A C T test prep classes, we had interest from students in multiple grade levels. I checked with A C T officials and our assessment team to see if we could include other grades for the district assessment, which traditionally tests our uh, juniors. I discovered we could and I'm pleased that we could offer an option for students to retake or test early with the ultimate goal of getting an improved composite score. Please note that in uh, school year twenty-one and school year twenty-two, grades ten through twelve are included. In our A C T test prep classes, we ultimately saw an increase in our cohorts composite score in the two A C T test prep classes at Lincoln and with the Early College Academy. The highest increase in scores we witnessed was for black female students. However, there is a lag in scores for the cohorts, black males and Hispanic females and demonstrates perhaps a need for multiple test opportunities and additional test prep. In our current cohort at East, we are seeing that the majority need additional supports for transportation, E L L accommodations and extended test time. I'm also pleased that our department launched the College Access Corner website and the bi-monthly newsletter, which have proven to be an effective means to communicate with our parents and students. I had a paraprofessional who works at Richardson contact me regarding questions about her senior and his college journey. It definitely evolved into additional conversations about her own desire to become a teacher and lead her own classroom. She contacted me about two weeks ago to inform me that she won the Casey Scholars Adult Learner Scholarship. And now she's motivated others on her team to apply next year for the same scholarship and serve as future K C P S teachers. Speaking of future teachers, last month, uh, we were able to travel to Jefferson City to learn about scholarships, to attract additional future STEM educators to attend uh, H B C U. In all of these field trips, we bridge students with scholarship information and resources. I want you to note the number of students who were awarded the Casey Scholars Scholarship, which offers up to fifty thousand dollars to finance a local college education. In every building, you'll notice that there are winners of the scholarship, but you'll also note that K C P S experienced its highest number of scholarships pre-pandemic and when we were fully staffed with Mizzou College Advising Corps staff. Post-pandemic, we had four out of five school staff last year, but only retained three of those individuals into the second semester. This year, we had one college advisor housed at Northeast who is bilingual and reaching so many students and families. According to the National College Attainment Network, ninety-two percent of seniors who complete the F A S F A promptly enrolled and attended college versus fifty-one percent who did not complete a F A S F A. Because of the importance of this first step, College Access initially met seniors in every building with our partners from the Educational Opportunity Center to market our virtual F A S F A session that we hosted. With a new College Access Specialist, we would see an even greater amount of families to guide through F A S F A applications and have the ability to provide earlier support for scholarships, college visits and more. As for the College Access Timeline, please note that in June, I'm scheduling a hundred summer academy students to visit colleges and learn about those programs. In July, we will begin onboarding four College Access Specialists who will support five of our buildings. Because they meet one-on-one with our students, three will be full-time serving our larger, larger school populations and one College Access Specialist will work with two of our high school, smaller high schools. Not only will they assist in the goals presented here, but also capture new data and closely monitor those F A S F A completion rates, college applications and scholarship award amounts. Finally, in April, the objective is to continue our college-going culture. This time next year, we will be finalizing plans for a district decision day to celebrate students and their C C R choices. Just like pro athletes, we want to recognize the achievements and academic commitments of all of our K C P S graduates. Before I introduce our um, next speaker, I want to uh, commend our, our um, excellent leader, uh, Dr. Darrell Davis. Uh, this week, excuse me, last week, um, they announced from the National Society for Experiential Education uh, that he has been awarded the twenty twenty-two Anna Julia Cooper Excellence in Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Justice in Experiential Education Award. I am so off-script, I apologize. I'm, I'm sorry, but um, we just wanted to commend him. Now, at this time, I want to introduce a K C P S senior, Jonathan Halasalasi.
Uh, hello, my name is Jonathan Halasalasi. Uh, good evening to the board members. Uh, my name is, like I said, Jonathan Halasalasi and I am currently a senior at uh, Lincoln College Preparatory Academy. And I'm here to talk about what my experience has been like this year in terms of uh, mentoring opportunities and uh, with the College Access staff. So this year and along the previous years, I have been fortunate enough to be able to participate in programs like M O C A and RISE. And I'm just want to speak about the impact that this has on me and other students li- like me. Uh, going into programs like M O C A, you kind of encounter students who like yourself are going through things in there, whether it's like at home or at school. And you kind of get together and you, you talk to each other, you get close and you can find that cohort of people that you can speak to comfortably. And additionally, you get to create a, a community and a support network within the district of adults that you can go to whenever you need anything, whether that be uh, people like uh, Ms. Nguyen or even uh, Dr. Darrell Davis himself. Uh, I also want to speak about uh, my experience with the College Access stuff, uh, specifically my junior year and my senior year. So I had the, the opportunity to participate in the A C T prep class, which I want to say is wonderful. It helped me get uh, my scores up to where they needed to be so I could apply to the colleges that I wanted to. And uh, I can speak for a lot of students when I say that it has been particularly impactful for especially this year's seniors, uh, in terms of getting the A C T scores up and things of that nature. Uh, additionally, I want to commend you guys for hiring the uh, a, a college and career counselor, especially at my school, Ms. Mahan. She's been of tremendous help in the college applications, whether it's been through essay writing, her uh, helping us apply for F A S F A, uh, C S S profile, uh, searching for scholarships and just things of that nature. She has made this uh, stressed, like stressful aspect of our lives significantly easier with her support. And I especially want to thank Ms. Nguyen for helping me uh, with all of my essays and being there for a lot of my classmates, not only in L, at Lincoln, but also throughout the district, uh, whether it's Northeast or those other high schoolers. Uh, and now I would like the time to, to announce that uh, what I will be doing for my plans in the future is I will be concentrating on government and philosophy on a pre-law track at Harvard University with the goal of. Thank you very much. I would like to thank my teachers, especially Ms. Nguyen, uh, Dr. Dale Davis, my RISE mentor and uh, just everyone. I hope that you guys can continue to focus on equity, especially for people in our district who do come from these low-income marginalized communities. And the support from the equity drive has been uh, extremely impactful in my personal journey and in the journey of my classmates. So, thank you very much.
Hey Jonathan, don't, don't leave. I think Dr. Bedell is going to say something. And just from my colleague, can you, can you come back to the mic and say where you're going again? Because I think that's important.
Uh, I will be attending Harvard University.
Yep, you all, you all heard him correctly. Uh, Jonathan, I, I just, I've been waiting. I was hoping that you would tell me because when I, I think last time I saw you, I said, well, man, have you decided? I know you've pretty much gotten into every word that you've applied. Um, I even wanted to bother you, uh, even when I saw you out at North Kansas City Y because sometimes he'll come out there and he's just out on the court shooting and uh, but I'm just, I'm proud of you, man, and everything that you've, you've been able to do and, and, and even the work. I've seen you over at um, uh, what's the church called where we got our shots? Huh? Morning Star. And I mean, this, this young man is, you're going to be phenomenal. You're going to represent us well and I know there you have a presentation. I'll finish the rest of my comments up uh, at the end.
Now, this is great news. Ms. Nguyen about a congressional internship. I think she could probably help you with that.
Absolutely. We're very proud of Jonathan. Jonathan, what's a couple of other schools you got into? Uh, I don't want to. That's right. So everyone at home, hey, you can, not only, you can clap for that, you can stand for that even from home. These are some of the stories that oftentimes are, are not mentioned uh, in the news media. So we're very proud of Jonathan and. So we're very proud of Jonathan and it's an example, this testimony is an example of the important work that we lead. When we started out with Board Policy 0.0, it talked about eliminating those discriminatory practices that continue to marginalize students. So we heard the testimony of a student that the work that we're leading is impactful and is making a difference. And again, Jonathan, we're so proud of you and we'll be with you on your next journey. As we continue in our presentation and we look at some of the barriers that we face, there are very deliberate efforts to diminish a lot of the work that, you know, we are wanting to accomplish in our system. Many staff, you know, really come to our system and what they hear and learn in the implicit bias training, maybe the first time they've ever considered this. And so the truth is, many, most, most of us probably, but many staff members, new employees are coming into our system, having gone through systems where the cultures that were celebrated, the, the texts that they had to read were by and about, you know, one group of people and oftentimes was not embracing of that culture. So to come in to the system and to say, we're going to not only have to address our biases, but leave that at the door, it is enlightening. And so we want to continue to engage in these conversations, but just want to put it out there that we're having to offset and counteract a lot of other narratives that they heard before they ever arrived at Kansas City Public Schools. Also, as we continue to look at some of our limitations around federal law, so you saw in this, in this, in this tweet from Northeast, you see Ms. Hernandez went there to talk to their freshmen about A-plus scholarships, et cetera. But we are still seeing that for many of our students that are undocumented, they're not able to access a lot of the programming that we're, that we're advertising and promoting and encouraging students to sign up. And so we are working through those scenarios to make sure we are providing equity and access for all. And then also, it's not highlighted. I'd say at the bottom, you heard Ms. Hernandez mention the hiring of College Access coordinators. We'll have four next, for the next couple of years through ESER. But one barrier that we'll be faced with, you know, in the, in the short term is, how do we continue that program beyond the ESER dollars? And you heard from Jonathan how impactful it is at his signature school that they have someone through that budget that's able to walk them through how to apply, how to identify scholarships, et cetera. We, we have to have that for all of our schools and this is what the College Access specialists will do. And so our action items, we're scheduling equity-focused trainings for next year. Most of the trainings over the past few years have been focused on administration, directors, leadership and conversation with, with teachers. We're going to have to open up a calendar of trainings that, that are available in the evening so that they can access these trainings. They're asking for more. And so we will, in addition to evening trainings, we'll work with our CIPD or bargaining group, whoever's working to get us more time on the, in the daytime PD, but we'll work out that over the summer. Also currently working with Dr. Collier, Dr. Jones and others on a, an RFP to have a vendor come in and audit our curriculum to make sure it's culturally responsive enough. If it doesn't meet the standard, what are the recommendations? And then we'll have next year to act on those recommendations so that as we go into fall 2023, we have a culturally responsive curriculum that we can roll out and provide training on. And then lastly, we have a team of staff who are currently completing training on increasing and sustaining a diverse education, educated workforce. So we've had one session, there are a couple of others, but we will then use that to complete one of the priorities that's in our equity plan, that speaks to this as a priority goal. And you will see the complete plan definitely in the fall. We are running it through the, the Student Equity Action Committee. We'll run it through the DAC. Once we've had ample feedback internally, we'll then share it with the cabinet and then you'll, you'll see it once it's been vetted. And so these are some of the items, but as you can see, equity is our goal. It's also our process. We're working with all departments because it does involve everyone. And so we thank you for this opportunity and we'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Davis and team. Outstanding presentation. Are there any questions? Ms. Buckner?
Yes, I will. I have a few, but I'll start off with, we know that part of equity is students having a sense of belonging. And so I'm wondering like how we're celebrating students outside of their academic achievement?
Yes, and I'll ask Mr. Hall to come back up. But in addition to celebrating culture through, you saw our Sancofa presentations, our Cise Puente. But in your question about how are we celebrating them outside of academics? Yes. 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 Yes, I would say that within schools, there are ample celebrations, not only for students who are meeting a particular standard, let's say honor roll, but they're also acknowledging students who are showing growth. And so having a student who may have had a 1.0 and now are at a 2.5, you didn't make a 3.0, they are acknowledging students who are showing growth, not only in, in the academic realm. It may be improvement in attendance in a number of areas. And then also, we see celebrations for students outside of academics. It could be in athletics. It, I see ample tweets around students who, you know, had a successful internship or students who are a part of, you know, numerous programs, a robotics team. So students are the whole child, not just what we do throughout the bell-to-bell, but also the, the numerous activities that they're engaged in after school. We have a very robust after-school program and students are acknowledged in multiple ways, for sure.
Ms. Buckner, can you use your mic?
Yeah, sorry. I'm asking because I've, I've been doing some recent research on the topic of inclusion and belonging in general. And so I think if, if our district were more intentional, what it sounds like is it really depends on the school, on the teacher, you know, the context. And so I'm asking, is there a district-wide effort to say, hey, we are recognizing kids who are great communicators, right? They might have some behavioral issues, but this is something that needs to come from district level, right? Intentionality as we talk about being culturally responsive and acknowledging the whole child.
Yes, what I can attest to is that that message is definitely communicated. And if I could take it a step further, that is also shown with our leaders. So we, we are also acknowledging growth in schools as a whole and acknowledging growth with staff and with buildings and across the board with our data. And, and schools are asked to replicate that with students. We, we want to acknowledge growth. And so that is communicated often. We may not have our tentacles or pulse on every single classroom, but I have seen enough examples to know that it is happening quite a bit. And then to the conversation around belonging, even though we say we're going to pilot a couple of affinity groups, there are some schools that already have those affinity groups going where they, you know, students come in and it's a safe space to talk about, you know, whatever the situation is that's going on, their lived experience. And so those things are happening and I do want to not make it seem like these will be the first two. But as we insert and provide training for additional schools that want to lead this effort and provide those supports, we want to provide that training for staff so that we can expound upon that and expand that across our district.
Ms. Ford?
Hi, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Davis and team. I have a few questions as well. I appreciate the emphasis and the variety of different training opportunities that you've identified that are being offered. I do think that education is like really key to any race, equity, diversity and inclusion work. I'm wanting to know how, how are the training opportunities framed? So it's not just compliance, something that you have to do, but shifts from learning because I have to learn this stuff to everyday practices and changes, it changes in everyday practices.
That is a great question. So it's a little of both. There's definitely compliance there. So all principals, vice principals, directors, executive leaders are asked, well, I'll say required to attend the trainings. And, but I can tell that for many staff, it's, it's, it goes beyond compliance because I am invited as follow-up to come in and lead trainings with whole schools. There are a lot of, and, and I've done with several departments. So there are, are equity-focused leaders in this room. And so, and this is not out of compliance. These are follow-ups. So I'd say within the last 90 days, three trainings at one middle school, two trainings at one particular elementary school. There was a training at a high school. There's another training at another elementary school. So this is beyond, goes beyond the compliance where we had to, where now we're wanting to engage multiple stakeholders so we can actually roll up our sleeves and dig into that. Now, is it happening everywhere? No, it's not. Some do stop at the compliance. But I, what I will say is that even though we can't dictate belief systems, we can dictate actions. And at the end of the day, we expect everyone's data to, for those disparities to close. So you don't have to believe it, but your work has to demonstrate that we're working to reduce those disparities on behalf of the children and families we serve. But that's why it's so important that we monitor the data and we provide staff and principals with that data so that we can be actionable in responding to that.
So within, you said we can dictate action. That's a great statement. So looking at the disparities in the suspension data for stu-, for students, for the one school that you showed us, like what is the expectation when audits are given to principals? Like what is the expectation beyond that to do something about those discrepancies?
So the expectation when we sit down with principals and help them read through the audit and in the past year, we actually developed a dashboard so they can sift through disparities for so many different subgroups. Unfortunately, we weren't able to repeat that this year through our SIS conversion. But the paper spreadsheet versions that they have, the goal is that they actually use that information not only in their early planning with schools, with their teams, as they map out their goals and strategies for the year, but that they can also have that in front of them to monitor, you know, how are we doing with that incrementally, not waiting till the whole next year is passed to see that we just luck up and do it. But we're monitoring who's not benefiting from the way things are. That is the ideal behind it. Now, I will say that Dr. Woodley and her team have done an excellent job of taking those audits and actually sitting with each administrative team to, to be a thought partner in those discussions as to how to respond to that data. Again, since we're not a fly in the room and we're not there every week to see that it's happening, but that is the intent behind it on how they should use it. But we're monitoring from this level, monitoring the monitor, so to say, through our equity audits and through the KPIs that you saw in the slides.
Let me just chime in on this response because the other thing that we don't want to happen is that it becomes superficial and people are doing things to intentionally lower their data or lower maybe even how they report so that, so that you really don't truly know whether it's sustainable change. So what we also do a couple of times throughout the year in cabinet is we have our deep data analysis and we deep data dives. And the, and we do it on the days where we have the assistant superintendents with us. We talk about specifics, specific schools. We did it, what, a couple of days ago? Looking at data and saying, hey, these are some outliers. Okay, what's the plan? What's the conversation you're going to have with the principal? Why are we having these types of disparities? And, and I think, you know, so it, it is a conversation that we're having and, and we're doing it not only at the cabinet level, but it does move to the school, but it also supports what Darrell's doing. And, and in some cases, and I just have to be honest with everybody, there are some legitimate reasons why the data looks the way that it looks. You know, once they come back and they say, here's what we've investigated and learned and we're, we're just having a number of infractions here that at this point is hard on us. You know, and so we just then have to then work and make sure that we're taking action with how we can support students with some of those needs and how they're dealing with it. I mean, we, we, we know we've dealt with it at one high school in particular this year where we've had a lot of incidents and that data is going to look high because of how the actions that students have taken. But I just want you to know, like, there is a multi-leared look at this data as we're trying to really truly eliminate these disparities and adhere to our equity policy.
If I could add, one more way that we can, that I believe we will be intentional around this is school leadership. They are taking all principals through training this summer, I think they've actually already started, with the School Improvement Plan. And so it's important that any disparities that principals receive in their equity audit, that we can find that in their school improvement plan toward closing those gaps that are, that, you know, pertain to their particular school. And so in the fall, I don't know what the completion date on that is, but as every school develops and has someone sign off on their approved plan, that we see, what are the strategies around intentionality in order to close any disparities that your school may have?
Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation. This is sort of a tangential discussion, you know, kind of in line with the school suspension, out of school time. I've received just a few questions around even recess. And so, and there's been some recent studies on how even holding back recess, you know, unfairly and inequitably harms people who might have, you know, ADD diagnoses or some other things or just kids who are kids and can't really stay with uninterrupted soul. But they're talking about how it's just a common practice. If work isn't finished, if, you know, whatever, or behavior, everybody's not quiet, you know, so the kids can't go outside or whatever. And then that tends to feel, fuel some of these other negative behaviors that Dr. Bedell just talked about. So I'm just kind of putting a bug out there. I think that's sort of the next wave when it comes to equity because this is kind of like an unregulated form of discipline. It's not documented. We're not tracking that. You can't really review it unless you ask your kid when they come home, did you have recess today? And so that's just kind of the next wave. I just wanted to put that out there. But it's kind of like we hit ourselves in the nose when we do that because that can fuel some of the other things. So as you talk to principals and you, and I'm hoping they talk to their teachers as you go into the next phase of training, I hope that's something that could be brought up because parents are now getting on that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that insight.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you. I'm going to take this off. Dr. Davis, great presentation and your team. I had a, on 22, slide 22, where you're doing the KPI monitoring, not for now and not for immediately, but I think it would be interesting to note, not only the teacher population, but the entire school population. And I only say that because I know especially at elementary, we had a number of paras, a number of custodial staff, others that were really a part of what I would say were our school, our tight school community. And I, I would like to just see maybe a secondary KPI around kind of the total school community. I think it might help give a broader view of what's going on at the school level, but great presentation.
Thank you and thank you for bringing that up. Absolutely. Dr. Bedell mentioned that same thing because he's aware of which elementary school this is and there is a black male staff member who's in the building, who does, he's positioned to build relationships. He's not a teacher, but to your point, it would be helpful to see everyone that's in there in its entirety and we can run that and thank you for bringing that up.
Ms. Wolfsey, you have more?
No, thank you.
Ms. Cortez?
Okay, so I just lost my train of thought. Ms. Cortez? Yes, come back, go to.
Dr. Davis, thank you for the, for the presentation and to your whole team. It's, I, I think one of my questions, and this kind of maybe interweaves too many streams, but how is your team involved in the conversations with, with school leadership and Dr. Woodley's department about how schools get staff to achieve the best outcomes, taking into account all of the different objectives that we're trying to address within our buildings to bring out the best in our kids? Uh, within our buildings to bring out the best in our kids.
That's a great question. Uh. Not 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 enough, I'll say. And is 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 probably the correct, is probably the uh. Yeah, yes, the is the uh, correct one. But I I have worked quite a bit uh, in a reactive stance uh, with. Uh, HR because many of them sit on our equity steering committee. And so uh, we have discussed the need for having. Measures in place to where, and I'll just be transparent. We have, we have schools in our district that have zero. Teachers of color in the building. And so if three teachers retire. And if there's no one monitoring where we have vacancies in a school where there's no representation for the buildings. The students that are in that building, then we can't respond to it. We can't be proactive. We can't even engage in the proper conversations. So I am uh, privy to some of those and we're having that conversation through a lot of the work that we're doing. Uh, kind of behind the scenes to build infrastructure, to be able to be uh, better and to be more intentional around knowing what schools uh. Have the least amount of representation. Uh, but to your point of not necessarily in the room as we're making those uh, hiring decisions. But it is something we likely could talk about.
I I would even add into that, I think it it goes beyond the representation question, even a question. A school that has disparate discipline outcomes, should that school be staffing one role versus another when they have those choices in the tier model?
Absolutely, absolutely. And HR is uh, they'll be leading a process that I will be involved uh, with. And they have a diverse group of uh, stakeholders coming in there. But on even our our screening process, our interview process, what questions are we asking to determine? Who's gonna be the best fit to deliver on the promise of a culturally responsive uh, education that we want to provide to our students? And so we're going to work on that so that we can uh, not say just get people in the door and then they hear this like, oh, I didn't sign up for this. So we're gonna definitely uh, work together to build out that process. And to your question, uh, we can be more intentional by working with our other academic. Uh, leaders who who do a lot of the hiring.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes, so I was really excited to see on the action items that uh, we're going to create a mentor recruitment pro- plan. Um, I work in the teacher um, pipeline um, um, industry. And I fully understand how hard it is to recruit and retain, you know, teachers of color. Um, because there are a lot of state barriers, right? There's a state test that our teachers, you know, um, have trouble passing. There's a whole lot of other things. Um, so I, that makes me really excited to see that there is a plan for mentorship. Um, I I don't know that we have like, I and I did see that there is an increase in the amount of mentors. So I have a few questions. How many?
I'm excited. However, uh, this particular mentor recruitment is for those who are gonna come in and mentor the students. But we uh, the the program that you're speaking to is up underneath Becky Nace, who leads our professional development. There is a plan for uh, recruiting and training the mentors who mentor the first year teachers. Uh, but that's in a ni- different office. So our, so before the pandemic, we were up to more than three thousand. We had about thirty-one hundred students who had a mentor. And then the pandemic. Our our numbers dropped. And so we we're basically had to have a restart this year. And so uh, so it's really, it's a mentor recruitment plan to reengage with our community. But then also, we want to leverage the eighteen hundred employees that we have right here internally. So uh, most of our mentors, and we have wonderful mentors from the community who come in and provide those uh, supports to our students uh, each and every week. However, most of them are from outside of KCPS. And so we have some untapped uh, potential. And so our recruitment plan is gonna really center on how do we get more of the staff who are already in the building? To give twenty to thirty minutes per week to provide those additional supports that Jonathan mentioned. Uh, so we'll have to get to the teacher mentor uh, one on another workshop. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, absolutely.
The value in um, in internal mentors. But when we talk about culturally responsive responsiveness, you know, folks from outside of this, the the district walls. Um, you know, folks that they might see at the corner store or, you know, the. I think just the presence of having people of color in buildings, right, um, does a lot. And so um, I think that is something that I would love to see. How many, you said, how many students in our district have a mentor?
Before the pan- pandemic, we were at thirty-one hundred. This year, uh, Marquise? Twelve hundred. So we 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 took a dip, but we're, we're gonna get it back up there.
Okay, um, is it, has there been a a campaign or an advertisement for outside mentors? What does that pipeline look like?
Yeah, so a lot of campaigning, a lot of partnerships, shaking hands uh, when we first launched the initiative. And so uh, we were really, we were on full uh, stride. In fact, the year of the pandemic, we had a kickoff event. We packed out central high schools, gymnasium, just with all the mentors. Uh, so it, we we just because of the pandemic, you know, people had to withdraw. The virtual mentoring didn't work as well for us. So uh, we have a, we have a blueprint on what works. And so we'll, we'll be working to reengage some of those partners we may have lost through the uh, uh, pandemic. I will uh, say that uh, happy to to report that Dr. Jones, uh, she. Brought in her colleagues at the city health department. And so we were able to go over and train uh, quite a few there. And they have adopted central high schools. So we have numerous partners around the uh, ci- uh, cities. But to your question as to how are we doing it, we'll work with an organizational champion such as Kevin Holmes was that champion for KSHB. Uh, TV forty-one. He was a Mocha mentor. He then uh, brought me in and led a training for many other KSHB uh, staff. And so they've adopted for sale high schools. So I mean, they're mentoring double-digit students over there, uh, students who who want to go into broadcasting. And so uh, we have numerous partners like that. But if we just have one on the inside, get us in, we can, we can sell the program. And and I'll, and and that's how we've been recruiting our mentors.
To um, blueprint twenty thirty and envisioning, um, I believe that the community needs to be in the school and we need to have a really robust mentorship program.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Cortez.
This is more of a future ask to Dr. Bedell, um, and uh, I think Mr. Rand's department. This is the second or third presentation where the implementation of infinite campus is a barrier. To timely and effective uh, tracking of the KPIs that different uh, team members use to to lead their divisions. I think as a board member, I'd like to gain an understanding of what the timeline is for getting that back on track.
That'd be one of our action items. We'll work on that.
Any other questions for my colleague?
Question. One more, it's quick. So at every high school, there's. For every high school, there's some type of a college access person that's a KCS, KCPS staff member. In addition to a Missouri College Advising Corps advisor. Every high school has both of those or no?
No, currently. So in the past, maybe six or seven years, we had a partnership with the University of Missouri Columbia. Where they provided a uh, MCAC advisor, Missouri College Advising Corps. This year, they were only able to staff one of those positions. So I guess so many employers are paying such high salaries that they couldn't attract. And uh, hire staff. And so our students paid the cost for that. And so what we want to do is through the creation of the college access specialists, bring it in-house. We can hire our own staff to do that same work. And so Lincoln Prep has their own college counselor through their, their um, their signature budget. And then we had one MCAC advisor this year for Northeast. The rest of the schools did not have an advisor. Which uh, you know, made uh, Ms. Hernandez work a little bit uh, harder, not having uh, you know, our agents boots on the ground. But then also we have, I believe, slightly poorer outcomes in the areas where we had that support. So the goal for the next two years and the position is out there posted. Uh, go to KCPS website and to look at college access specialists, but we will hire onboard those individuals. Next year, that will be a true statement that every single school has a college access specialist or a college counselor.
Any other questions before I ask my couple? Okay, I I know, I'm not, not, I got a list of forty. Um, can you just mention, and I think this is important for the public, because as we've talked about the conversation around getting diverse folks into our school buildings. Can you or Dr. Bedell talk about the educational landscape and the challenges there? And even the pipeline that I think Ms. Buckner brought up before, there's some issues and it's really not an us not wanting more. It's landscape. Can you talk about that?
Yes, uh, one of the main challenges is that uh, fewer. College students of color are majoring or choosing education as a career path. So that's, that's one barrier. Um, one solution to that uh, that we're still exploring is really um. So if you go onto a college campus and you you park outside of the uh, College of Education, you work with their staff. And then you're trying to recruit, you know, qualified candidates and you really don't see diverse candidates there. But you see ample that are business majors and and math majors, science majors. Well, they just, they don't have the teaching credential. But if we can then say, hey, have you considered, you know, how you can make a difference uh, through social justice, through teaching the content that you already. And just come in as a teacher, uh, hopefully under a two-year provisional, working with our HR department. If we can do some of those and 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 maybe allow for, so so the the charter schools can have twenty percent of their staff. I believe it's twenty percent. Twenty percent of their staff uh, not have certification. That allows some schools to have more flexibility to diversify their staff. And so, you know, I'd like if we could have some more flexibility. I know we've been fairly proud to say a hundred percent of our. Uh, teachers are certified, but there's ample opportunity. If we have some of that same flexibility. That would, that's, that's a, that's a huge barrier right there that where we're, we're not on the same level playing field.
And that's a state requirement? So that's a legis- state legislative, state DESI?
Yes.
To your point, Mr. Barker, one of the other challenges is not only do we have fewer um, teachers of colors going into the industry. In the state of Missouri, there's only about four percent representation of teachers of color. Nationally, there's only about a seven. KCPS is sitting at thirty-eight percent, which is great, but it's not good enough. So we have to get real intentional about how do we create a space in a career pathing for uh, teachers. Uh, to enter into the classroom under that certification pathway. One other thing we do is we focus on um, our para-pro program, our paraprofessional. So all of our teachers, where we look at non-certified roles, the majority of them, those instructional supports, those paraprofessional, they are teachers of color. They're working well. They have been working well with our kids. It's our responsibility and we've taken that on through partnerships um, with UCM. With um, Urban Education Institute, with KCTR, trying to create additional pathway opportunities for those teachers to go back. Complete degrees if necessary, but most importantly, uh, assistance with the certification process. That is for us, one of the largest barriers, getting our teachers pass that certification exam. One of the things that DESI has um, done for us in support of that is we, we were recently notified. There were recipients of the one point three million dollar teacher retention grant. So we're gonna allocate the majority of those monies to help finance and support. Not only with tutoring, with mentoring, but also paying for those exam costs, which are really expensive. To help those non-certified but highly qualified instructors cross that certification pathway. So again, our, our largest priority is trying to identify where they are in our system. And then create the opportunities through partnerships and through collaboration to help them get to that certification point.
Thank you for that clarity. Um, a couple of quick other ones. Uh, Dr. Davis, you never shy when I ask the question of what budgetary needs do you need uh, for this? And since we just had a budget hearing, uh, I'd be curious to know what, what, what those are.
Quite a bit, quite a bit, uh, quite a bit, quite a bit. And and I hate to go on record. Cause I don't, I don't want anyone uh, coming after you if if we don't get that. But uh, one, one barrier uh, that we, that's maybe not financial. Was really having uh, adequate substitute teachers for this year. We had a plan to roll out a culturally responsive teaching academy this year. Uh, was uh, uh, planned out, shared with our academic team. Uh, the concept was shared with the board. Uh, which would pull two teachers out of every school uh, each month over the past year to go through the training. Those two teachers would then be a part of turnkeying that training in their buildings. And so it's a, it, not only a train to trainer, but it's learning from your peers, your colleagues. Unfortunately, because we have such a huge uh, shortage of subs, we weren't able to pull additional teachers out when they were already shorthanded. So uh, we'll work and brainstorm this summer to see in what ways uh, can we provide solutions to that? And that may require more money. That helps everyone. I know this year we had one building sub, maybe it's two or three. I don't know. But we'll, we'll, give me some time to think on that. If I could add to your earlier question around what contributes to the. To the uh, the barriers, I don't wanna understate or estimate. The factor of the lack of representation that we currently have. So to be something, oftentimes you need to see it, at least know of it. And because we have such low representation, especially on the males of color side, it does contribute to the lower numbers. Not just in our district, but just nationally, uh, the number of uh, black and brown males who want to choose the, this as a career field. Cause they don't see that. And for many students, we see the data, the national data, uh, black boys suspended, you know, rates of four to one nationally. That's also been in Missouri. It's also been in our district. And so for many boys, you know, why would they want to go back into an environment that, you know, traumatize them? Or marginalize them? And so, so we have to look at not only, you know, what is the system? How does it need to change? So that it nurtures and supports, you know, a future pipeline of educators from within our midst. And so we are looking at that as part of a grow your own uh, model as well.
I'm surprised you didn't have bigger asks though, Dr. Davis.
But um, the last question I have, I think ties up back to your barriers again. I see very deliberate efforts by far-right think tanks to diminish and devalue cultural responsive practices. As well as any conversations about how race may impact teaching and learning. Radical ideology, sexism, gender roles, LGBTQ A plus ideology, ability and disability ideology are steeped in longstanding beliefs. And then the federal laws prohibiting undocumented students from seeking federal aid. Those are incredibly impactful and detrimental, debilitating really for some of our students. What can we as a board do on that component? Whether it's policy agenda items, federal policy agenda items, um, sending students to DC to advocate. What more can we do as a board to help support and and eliminate some of those barriers or or be vocal about our aversion to them?
Yes, I would say uh, it's really, it's around more professional development time. Cause there are so many initiatives. They're almost competing priorities. And so this is, this, this requires a lot of training. And teachers, they, 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 they mention all the time, they want more training, uh, but there's limited opportunities. And then there's, there's literacy uh, training that teachers have to go into. There's this other training, you know, there's, there's so many different initiatives. Culture responsive, uh, I'm sorry, uh, trauma-informed, uh, restorative practices. There's so many trainings, but so little time. And so I would say that we have to identify, how do we create more time to really then be able to tackle? This particular component, which the onboarding, you know, is like a, is like a light bulb. It's a wake-up. You know, but then it's like, okay, I need more time for this. Uh, as you see, these are deep-seated, long-held beliefs. That, you know, I've, I've heard, I've been indoctrinated with, or I've just been around in my ecosystem for thirty years before I ever. Arrived at Kansas City Public Schools. And now in, in three hours, you know, I, I, it's, it's not going to so, so there's, you know, hey. When's my next opportunity? We have that for the leadership. We just need more PD time. Or maybe to make a di- uh, different use of the time we have in order to tackle a lot of this training that teachers are asking for.
I think, Dr. Bedell, you had some comments?
Yeah, just uh, just a couple of pieces for um, the community and anybody that comes back to listen to this presentation. You know, we talk a lot about the disparities that you've seen in the data tonight around the teaching workforce. And I think if you look at the data from top to bottom, when you think about even from a superintendent standpoint. Uh, when I'm at those state conferences, I'm probably counting on one hand, the number of African-American superintendents. I only know of one Hispanic superintendent in the state, and that's the gentleman in Grandview, who's one of my close friends. Um, so there is uh, uh, a, a true lack of diversity across the state of Missouri. And as you, as, as you heard Jordan mention to you that our district is at thirty-eight percent with teachers of color. And that still doesn't replicate or represent what our students. and that still doesn't replicate or represent what our student demographics look like. There is much more intentionality needed, even from a legislative standpoint, to push that we have to have that focus. If you look at some other states, they've passed some bills that is requiring that there's a focus from the state superintendent or the commissioner of education that we, that we have to do things to do a better job of diversifying our workforce. And I know DESI talks about it and wants to do it, but there's also this aspect that the state of Missouri has to be more inviting to people of color too. And I don't think, you can go out here and do all of this recruiting, but if people don't feel, just like we talk about a sense of belonging for students in schools, adults have to also have a sense of belonging in these respective cities and respective districts that they are asked to come in and work in. And so there's much work, and it, and it really does go a lot deeper. You know, I talked about surface-level things earlier, and that's the problem that I feel in our state, but even in our city. You know, we'll do town hall meetings. We do all of this talking. It's a whole bunch of talking. And there's a reason why people don't believe anymore that anything's going to be different because we're not unpacking and dismantling the system. The system has to be unpacked. Otherwise, we'll continue to come back and have these conversations about being at 38% or 40% or that across the state of Missouri out of 518 school districts, that you have no more than 20 black superintendents and no more than maybe two Hispanic superintendents, and even the disparity from a gender standpoint at the highest levels. So I just, you know, I, I'm, I'm proud of the work that we're doing. Mr. Abaka asked the question, how many other districts are doing this and going as deep as we're going with this? I don't know. I mean, I, the only one I know of that has done this kind of work is out in Ithaca. And I know that our board has also been doing work that maybe people don't know, looking at our board policies and working to rewrite those board policies so that they're not, they're not inclusive of oppressive language and things that counter Equity Policy 0.0. So I'm, I'm really proud of our board for your work on what you're doing, which maybe, you may be doing it very quietly, but you're doing it. And these are the things that are going to change the system. And then last but not least, everything that you heard today, this is all about love and compassion. I mean, that's the title of, of, of my speech. I'm keynoting at William Jew on Saturday. And it's about love and compassion. Mentoring requires that you have to be able to be willing to give of yourself to help others that may not be in, as an advantaged situation that you are, but understanding that my job is to understand that I may be at a level where I have resources and privilege, and I can help uplift you. And I think in this country, we've grown so cold and callous that it's not my problem, so why should I worry about it? But it really is your problem. And, and I, and I just, I thank all of the people who have volunteered, who have stepped up to help. I personally want to thank my wife, who mentors every year, and she has a central middle girl now that she's mentoring, and she enjoys it. But, you know, we need, to Candace's point, we got to have the community, and we have to also make sure that we're opening our doors for the community to come in and help us. And then Darrell, hey, keep up the good work. You and your wonderful team. You have a phenomenal team. I'm really proud of you for being recognized for that award, and there's nobody who deserves it more. This is your area. This is what you do. And hey, I couldn't be more fortunate to have been able to work with you and just to watch the evolution of how we're moving this district from an equity lens.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell.
I think Dr. Jones had?
Well, Dr. Bedell took some of my points, but I did want to shout out Dr. Davis's team, Marquis and Maddie, all those folks who keep us on track with the mentoring and, you know, coming out to the workplaces and encouraging people. And to the point about, this is where we do need the community to join in. If, if people are saying, what can I do about the issues I'm seeing in my neighborhood or my community? This is an opportunity to step up. I see the posts that you all make on Facebook and Twitter about coming mentor with us, come and do this, sign up for this amount of time. I do think this is an opportunity for employers even to say, hey, I'm going to give you, you know, if you don't want to do it on your lunch period, I'll give you so many hours of your time that you can use to go and do community service, AKA mentoring. That's one benefit that the city has, and I know some other local employers. I think we could open that up because there are people who have a heart to do this work, but maybe they can't get off, they don't have a job where they have an hour-long lunch, or they don't have, you know, allocated volunteer hours. So I think that this is something where our, our community can step up. And so I do appreciate your team for keeping us on track. And I think more of us who are mentors, it's helpful when we can share. Hey, I'm only able to meet with my mentee about twice a month, and I spend maybe 45 minutes to an hour. We have lunch and we talk. And this is how she receives this. This is how he, you know, benefits from this. It's not, it doesn't take every day. I'm not going out there every day. I'm not, you know. And people hear, oh, you do it? Well, okay. Well, I guess I can fit it in too. So I think more of us having these conversations, this is my third year doing it. I have found it to be very fulfilling, and I continue to tell my story and encourage other people to do it as well. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you very much, and thank you for serving. I want to go back to this slide just in case people may have missed. That is Dr. Jones, her mentee up top there.
One final comment that I think is important. Dr. Bedell, you had mentioned the diversity. Well, I think Jordan Gordon brought up the fact about the, the diverse facts and the percentages and that reality. And I have to give kudos to my board colleagues because I believe we are the most diverse board in, in probably the state for sure, but in the city as well, in terms of all the representation opportunities we have. And that, that just shows so much to the work that we prioritize and we focus on and the questions we ask. That level of representation is incredibly important. So had to give that shout out. Because I know we've been at MSBA and know we have similar issues of counting who's in the room. With that.
Board Treasurer, could I take one more minute here? So also, as we look at how we're embedding equity into our processes and goals next year, we're also looking at who's at the table, who has opportunity to provide input in decision-making. So that voice that Dr. Collier mentioned in the academic vision, we're going to live that out in every decision that we make. Are we including parents? Are we including students at the table? And then, because we need other voices to make sure that before we make a decision, we've considered the impact on those communities, especially those who have been historically marginalized, so that we're not making decisions that we then have to come back and unravel because we didn't, we, we were missing a perspective. So we want to be equitable in the process of achieving equity. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And again, Jonathan, congratulations, Harvard. That's incredible, and offers Mocha Works, Dr. Davis.
That's right, that's right. So I will, as I exit, if there's any, any questions or comments for Jonathan, he, he did stay around for, in case you had a photo or something. Thank you. Thank you, board.
Dr. Bedell, you have some agenda items for next board meeting?
Mr. Chair, several items that we will present at the business meeting on May 25th. The preliminary budget presentation, the Grow Your Own Grant that Jordan Gordon talked about, the acceptance of the $1.3 million grant, School Nutrition Program Supply Train Assistance Grant in the amount of $251,716, the CREC feasibility study for $300,000, the Discovery Education Contract for $700,000, and the Curriculum Associates Contract for $700,000.
Oh, just, it sounds like we dealt with that, but the action items will be sent from Ms. Cortez to June in regards to her question. Without any additional updates from Dr. Davis or or any other comments from my colleagues?
I would actually, for the action items, if someone can give me information on how to become a mentor.
Sign her up. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there is no objection, the meeting will be adjourned. No objection. The next meeting will be May 25th, 2022. Meeting's adjourned.